On the agenda, under my section, there's a part about the green.
Yeah. The new, the new agendas got it struck off. So we're ready, Kerry?
Yep.
Want to call the meeting to order? We'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And it's a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the just as strong.
Roll call.
Mottler.
Here.
Packard.
Here.
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 Hammond.
Here.
Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing none. Approval of agenda, but we also need to add, how do I want to phrase it? Authorizing the deductible for, what type of attorney is it, Kerry?
Um.
County pool attorney?
Yeah, you could say that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure how you want to word that, but I think that would be fine.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Approve minutes.
Will do it through with maybe adding some coverage about the HPHC system. I propose that we say that that says moved and seconded, Manny moved and seconded by Hammond to authorize the boiler ventilation system option three B and each of the other options. I would amend that to say authorize continued work by the engineering staff. I'll second.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Mic on.
No, sorry.
So you're amending it to say authorize continued work by engineering staff.
Correct.
So have a motion in a second. Betty, did you have?
Yeah, so my memory of the meeting and my notes suggest that there's a, under the medical marijuana discussion, Smith suggested C1 and I2 districts for all four uses. And my sense was that, you know, we were, we were all agreeable to that, given the, the fact that dispensaries need to compound, which is, they need to compound on site, which is classified by the state as manufacturing. And so if we don't allow manufacturing, it means that dispensaries have to have a separate facility in an industrial park or an industrial area. So, so, so that doesn't, it actually doesn't work. And my sense was that, you know, that we were kind of all on the same page on that and that, does that, does that ring a bell with you? Okay. Yeah, well, I think though that what I, what I saw today's, okay, okay, good. Yeah, but, but we should, we should add that into the notes then if that's something that we, we agreed on at the last meeting.
Into the minutes.
Yeah, so, so into the minutes, let's see. Smith suggested C1 and C2. You know, after Manning's, let's see. Manufacturing goes along with cultivation. Manning said maybe testing should be put in commercial and general industrial. Smith suggested C1 and I2. And, and then I, I think Drew suggested that we, we just condense the two paragraphs of ordinance on zoning so that all four functions would be allowable in commercial and general industrial zones.
So you would condense two paragraphs of the ordinance, of the zoning ordinance, so all four functions would be allowable in commercial and general industrial zones?
Yep, I think that was. And Drew, would you get your microphone closer to you?
It's better. Want to make sure everybody here.
Especially on this coming up.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Are there any visitors to be heard? Seeing none. Matt, start with the ambulance purchase.
Last week I came and spoke about the ambulance replacement that's due in January and the kind of the issues we're having with supply chain and things like that. And so we've been in talks with a vendor that has several demo vehicles coming off the line end of November and worked with them over the last week to put together a more fine-tuned proposal with a price on the purchase of a new 2022 Type 1, which is a pickup truck chassis, F-550 diesel, four by four ambulance. This ambulance would be ready and be delivered to the dealer the end of November. They would in turn use it for a couple of months as a demo vehicle. And we would actually not take possession of it until mid, mid to late January. In turn, we would not be responsible for sending them a check or payment until the time we take delivery. So that would push off payment until mid to late January. So that should help hopefully with some of the funding for it. Obviously, we're still short on funding. As Kerry pointed out at the last meeting, it's about 186,000 that'll be available right after the first of the year. This truck currently with all of these options is 257-520. Some of these options though will actually be taken out of this bid proposal and that she's currently working on now to remove some of them because they'll actually be paid for out of city funds that are used for ambulance equipment for the new ambulances. And so that actually takes the price of the vehicle down to currently 2, As I mentioned before the meeting started, there are just a few minor things that we got the drawings about 20 minutes ago before the meeting. We are, we need to talk to them just to have them put a set of secondary switch panels and heating and AC controls on the curb side wall. So that way our EMTs and parabetics don't have to get up out of their seat and buckle to, you know, change the air temperature, shut the lights off or whatnot. And, you know, with these, with the new ambulances, they have the four-point restraint systems in them that you can move around a little bit, but you stay strapped into the seat in case of a auto accident. And so otherwise, they have added and done what we asked of them for some modifications from what they had originally planned. We, you know, catching it now and actually coming upon these, this ambulance or these ambulances that they have available now, they don't actually go to production for about another six weeks. So making minor changes and moving things here or there is not a big deal because they haven't even started constructing it yet. They have the chassis and that's it. So that's where we're at. That's what we're looking at. That's a much closer number, 245, to then the $20,000 span I gave you last week. And like I said, there'll be just a little bit of modification, but I don't see it costing tons and tons of money to, you know, run a couple extra wires over to the other side of the truck, especially since the truck isn't built. You know, they'd just be pulling the wire when they pull the wire for the vehicle itself. So otherwise, that's, that's it. They did give us the 5,000 for trade on our old one. Yeah, and, you know, they're, they're allowing us not to pay for it until we actually take possession of the, of the truck. And so like I said, our goal will be to take possession mid to late January so that we have it in service by February 1st.
Do they try to re, I mean, I'm assuming they resell those, the used ones?
Yeah, so.
That seems like an awful long fair price.
Oh.
For trading it by thousand dollars.
Sometimes they do. You know, this one's, it's, 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 it's definitely been used. It's, it's been used heavily. You know, how much resale they'll get out of it or if they'd be able to resell it to another ambulance, you know, I don't know. It, you know, it's got quite a bit of work that needs to be done to it to bring it up to, bring it back up to where, where it needs to be. Not that we haven't done upkeep on it, but it does need some work. The manufacturer, that manufactured the patient compartment is no longer in business. So getting parts can be difficult. You know, like getting a new circuit board because other, other manufacturers might not use the same one. And so they may have to, you know, it could involve rewiring and things like that. And at that point, it's not, it's not worth money wise trying to, to do anything with it. So.
Okay. So what year is the, is it an F-550, the one that we're going to get rid of?
No, the one we're going to get rid of is an E-450. It's on an Econo line chassis.
Okay.
Two-wheel drive.
Okay.
Oh, you're going to a four-wheel drive, correct?
Correct. Yes, this would be adding, this would be the second four-wheel drive that we would be putting into the fleet of three.
So it sounds like we need to increase our annual allocation for the ambulance fund in future budgets.
Yeah, so for the 2024 budget, which would be the first payment for the next one, I would love to be able to give you a number right now of what we should start at. But I would think, I would assume, but you guys do budget probably what, summer, summertime of 23 for 24? Is that correct?
Yeah, but we'll have to start, we'll have to start this year.
But, you know, I would say we're probably looking, you know, around that $50,000 mark to start. And then, you know, we did a, what did Kerry, what did we do? Three or 5% every year? We went up, something like that. You know, standard used to be about 5% as industry is what they said. But over the last two to three years, they've been anywhere from 10 to 20% increasing. So I, I, it's very hard to speculate right now where we'll be, you know, in, in a year or that. Without seeing what the economy and, you know, the markets do on, on pricing. But that could be something too that we could adjust yearly. I mean, we could do some research every year and come back to you and be like, you know, we talked to the manufacturers and this is what they're anticipating for an increase for next year, you know, and, you know, we could modify it year to year at budget time instead of just saying, oh, about 5% every year. That might be a little, a little closer. But again, it is extremely hard to determine. I mean, like Travis said, 10 years ago, we were buying ambulances for $110,000 and it was no big deal. You know, I remember when I specked out my first one back in 2005 and we paid like $130,000 and that was top of the line, all the bells and whistles and everything in it. And now we're over, we're double that for a, one that's good quality, but doesn't have all the bells and whistles, but isn't minus a bunch of stuff either. So they, they really changed drastically in the last 10 years.
What we need today is to authorize the purchase of this, if this is what we're going to do.
I will so move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Is there any way we can try and sell that ambulance on our own before this new one comes in?
We could, I mean, we could put it out for, let's see, trying to think how we have to do it. We could, we could put it, it can go out for sealed bid or if it was sold to another entity within the state of South Dakota, it could be done by direct sale. We could see what it would, what it would go for. But I don't know how much we would get for, I don't know what the demand is right now for, for, for an older used ambulance. But I can do some checking into it though and see if that might be an option. We have a few months where we could work on that potentially.
Some smaller town might be interested. The downside is, is that the air conditioning in the back unit and heating in the back unit are not operative at this point.
So.
There's some electronics.
Yeah, so that, so when I was here last week, we, we, we were without heating and air conditioning in the patient compartment. I'm talking with the ambulance, a couple of different ambulance manufacturers and looking at schematics. They were, the one company I actually talked to had the same ambulance sitting in their lot that they had taken on trade. And they were able to get their, like, put their electricians on the circuit board and they were able to figure out, we actually have a bad spot on the circuit board. So it would require an entire circuit board replacement, which they're not available because the company doesn't exist anymore. They actually were able to come up with a way to bypass the circuit board using the relay still. So we actually, it's wired, it's working. The minute we did it, it fired right up. But it's no guarantee that that's going to last or that other parts of that circuit board aren't going to start to go out.
Would the chassis for somebody be worth more than the 5,000? That's.
Yeah.
Probably not, because if you took the patient, if you took the box off of it, the patient compartment, that there is no back wall to the chassis. It's been completely cut away. These are called band cutaway chassis. So there is no back wall to that. And so unless you were putting something back on there, it's a, you know, it wouldn't be worth anything.
Good. And it's two-wheel drive.
Yeah, I know that.
That's the worst part.
Draw back right there.
Might be a great car for a college kid.
Yeah, they, one, one company we had talked to about trade-ins, they actually said that they have plumbers that buy them sometimes. Construction people buy them just because of all the compartment space. You know, and they don't care how many miles are on them and, you know, but they're like, they don't, they don't give big money for them. They, they give a little bit of money and, and they take them off your hands and you don't have to worry about it anymore. So.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you very much. I will send updated copies of this when she revises it and things like that so that you have it.
So who technically owns the ambulance?
The city owns.
Okay, so they'll.
Title, license, maintained through the city.
So they'll surplus it then when the time comes?
We would take care of, if that's the route we choose to go is to surplus it. That's the route we go is to choose to surplus it and sell it outright. The city would take care, I'd work with Jose to get it either put up for surplus bid or direct sale to another agency if there was somebody else interested in it. So we could try, that would be the route I would recommend. We try rather than doing the surplus and auction route because you just never know what's going to come about with that would be to just declare it, declare a value on it and then send it out through the ambulance associate, South Dakota Ambulance Association and see if anybody's interested in it with a bunch of pictures. And if somebody bites on it, great. If they don't, well, then we could always, I mean, we could always trade it in. You know, and, and then it's gone with the vehicle or when we receive the new vehicle. So that would be my recommendations.
Sounds like a good plan.
So, but yeah, we'll get on that and, and, and get a value declared on it. And then we can, actually, we could advertise it through the South Dakota Ambulance Association and through the state agencies.
But if the city surpluses it, who gets the money then?
Um.
Are they, are they going to put it against the new ambulance?
That's a good question, how that actually, how that works. I mean, we have a unique relationship with the, with, with the way we do the ambulances. I, my, my, my knee-jerk reaction would be yes, it would go back towards the.
Purchase the new one.
Purchase of, of the new one.
Yeah, is it, is it a special revenue fund that accounts for ambulances?
Uh, no, it's so the, so we, the county cuss the check directly to the manufacturer to pay for it. And then he takes possession of it, titles it, licenses it and does all the maintenance and work on it. So it's, there, there is no revenue fund. There, there's no money paid into the city equipment replacement fund for it. But that, like I said, that I don't, I don't see why they wouldn't be agreeable that whatever we get for it goes back towards the new vehicle because we're just legally, we are the ones that have to surplus it because our name's on it. So just one of those.
That'd be good.
One of those cones we have to work around and, and get back to. But I don't, I don't see that being a, a, a big issue with that, especially because we're getting rid of the, the vehicle and not having to sit on it.
Yeah, it seems to me like last surplus, city surplus sale, you know, the vehicle sale. But I think it said somewhere there that it go, the all proceeds of that reverse to the general fund. But, you know, it'd be good to check on it, just see where it goes. Not that we've got an influence on it.
Yeah, well, it would, it would technically go back. I mean, the, the sale of it, that, that check would be deposited into the general fund. But there's nothing that says they can't turn around, cut that check back to the manufacturer for whatever that is. And then the, the county would cut a check minus that to the manufacturer to pay for the rest of it.
Well, the only reason I ask is if they wouldn't give the money back, we're better off trading it in and getting the 5,000 versus nothing.
Sure.
But I mean, I just wanted to ask the question.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'll do some checking on that and I'll, I'll, I'll get back to you on, on how exactly we, we could work that and, and things like that. If we did direct sale it for, you know, if we can get more than the 5,000 that they're, they're offering on trade. So, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Uh, we're going to canvas the 2022 primary election.
I don't think we did a roll call yet for that, did we? For the ambulance motion?
I thought we did, didn't we?
Yeah.
Did we? I must have missed it.
I'm not sure.
Well, let's do it. Let's just do it again for good measure then.
Yeah, let's do it again.
Okay.
So, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes.
I took you right, Kerry. I don't think we did.
I know, we got into discussion and then I.
Yeah, but I thought we did. That's why we dismissed him. Anyway.
Answers are the same either.
Yeah, canvas of the 2022 primary election. Somebody needs.
I don't know. We have, if you want to ask somebody.
Somebody needs to follow that along.
Well, that way, I think I have them all in the same order. I'm not positive. Phyllis, I did put some of those results in your packet, so maybe follow along. So what we'll do then is go through the results from the tabulator. And then the, the results that were reported to the state are on another side of those white sheets. And then the green sheets are the totals that came in from the poll workers. And then those should match the poll book.
Okay, so somebody needs to do the white sheets, somebody needs to do the green sheets and I'll open the packets. So you guys fight over who gets to do that one.
Okay, so how do we?
I'll read off which one we've got and you find, find the green sheet that matches it and the same way with the white sheets. So we're going to do rule word one.
When we're all done, I'll need to get your signature on the canvas sheet. So if I can either stop by your house or if you can stop by the office, whatever works for you. All right then.
So I have 50 registered voter or 50 voters.
I'm just looking for where, where I find them.
Yeah.
We'll have a poll work for absentees on a poll book. So you'll have two to add together there.
Okay.
Okay, just wait, let's hear.
All right, so we're in rule word one. And where do I find the 50? There's an absentee sheet for the rowers too. And it has all of them. Oh, I see. Yep, yep, yep. Got it, got it, got it. Okay, roll word 150.
But there's only one of these books, correct, Kerry?
There's two poll books.
Two of these?
Yep, because there'll be one for the absentees and one for the polling place.
Okay, there's the other rule word one. Okay, so there's 50 in that one. Then I have 156.
Or.
For rule word one, so there'll be 206.
Where is 156? To have a separate sheet. Okay, yeah, ballots to be counted, line nine minus line 10. Is that right? Yeah, so that's down here in the totals.
We've got rule word two. This is the absentee one. There is 19. So the other, the other book for rule, rule word two is 142.
Yes.
Rule word three. Absentee. 131.
Yep.
And then 384.
Yes.
Central ward one and two. Absentee. For C1 is 124.
Yeah, they're not separated out here. It's one and two.
They're out together.
They may have separated them out of the poll book. But they are, so central, northeast and northwest are all combined. You know, the ones and the twos are combined for this one.
So it should be 151?
Yep.
Okay.
That's what I've got.
For absentee.
Yeah.
And then for the central ward, 159.
Yes.
Northeast. There's no seal on this one, Carrie.
Okay. I think that was the one that said that.
Okay, so this is, um, not the absentee one. And this has 142.
Correct.
Well, I I haven't. It's, um, let's see. Northeast.
Yep, right here. 92.
Yes.
Southeast one. This is the regular one, none, not absentee, 378.
Yes.
Absentee for southeast one. 193.
Correct.
Southeast two. 25.
I've got 224. One provisional ballots voted one.
Yep, and the provisional ballot will not count. So we will be one less on that one. Yeah.
What were the figures on that one?
224. Well, he had 225.
Right, but one of them didn't get counted.
Right.
Okay.
Southeast two absentee. 160.
Correct.
Northwest one and two. This is absentee. 214.
Correct.
Uh, 417 for Northwest.
I don't have it.
Total. I've got a photocopy.
So, yep, Northwest, um, you can find their their green sheet. I don't know what happened to it. But we were able to pull from their statement that they fill out their ballots, and that's what Dick has there. So that's the replacement green sheet essentially because.
Okay.
So there's.
And they're added separately here.
Yeah, the adding machine tape is up in the left corner there. I think we had 214 there. I think there was one unstamped ballot in that word that we had to pull.
Okay, 417 would be the total.
I've got 417.
Okay.
And that's the last one. Hand that to Carrie.
Then would be to compare our tabulator results, um, which you might have in your hand there, Betty. I think it looks like the right stack, um, to the sheets that Dick has there for each candidate, just the total number of votes for each candidate, to show that we did, in fact, report the correct number from our tabulator to this.
Good, so I can see the titles here. And then how do we go through that?
So, Betty, you've got the total sheet.
Okay, so just read out the total of the candidates and the numbers. So starting out with US, uh, Republican US Senate. Tell me when you're ready, Dick.
Okay.
Okay, Soon, 860, Whalen, 194.
Correct.
Maury, 63.
Correct.
Undervotes, 44.
Oh, we don't.
Oh, we don't.
Don't need to know. That's just telling us, um, how many people didn't vote for.
Yeah.
That race.
Okay.
Yeah, if it's a vote for two and a person only votes for one, that will count as an under voter. If they don't vote for a candidate, that's what that is. So I would just compare the totals of just the candidate votes.
Okay, um, so for, um, uh, Republican US Representative, um, Johnson, 747.
Correct.
Howard, 379.
Correct.
Uh, Republican governor's race, um, Howgard, 302, Noam, 818.
Correct.
Okay, so Republican county commission member at large.
I'm gonna check here.
Okay.
Till I find that one. Oh, here we go. Yeah, go ahead.
TZ, 712.
Correct.
Pulse, 331.
Correct.
Bon Sac, 428.
Correct.
Uh, for precinct committee man. Um, S2, Tracy, 50, Thurman, 33.
Hang on, you're just.
Okay.
Precinct committee man one.
This would be S2.
Aren't they all on the same sheet for a precinct person?
Okay. Okay, run that by me again. I'll find the name.
All right, Tracy, Gerald Eugene Tracy.
Okay.
50.
Correct.
Thurman, 33.
Correct.
Okay, precinct one. And that would be Lowen, 30.
Correct.
Tyart, 52.
Correct.
Davis, 26.
Correct.
For precinct three, Republican committee man. Nitski, 81.
Correct.
Wal Raven, 79.
Correct.
Okay, uh, precinct woman, S2. Tracy, 60.
Correct.
Thurman, 26.
Correct.
Committee woman, precinct one. Davis, 43.
Davis. Okay, 43, correct.
Uh, Lowen, 26.
Correct.
Tyart, 43.
Correct.
Committee woman, precinct three. Wal Raven, 87.
Correct.
Nitski, 66.
Correct.
Okay, so Democrat at large. This is a commission, county commission.
Commissioner at large.
Let me know when you're ready.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay, Manning, 751.
Correct.
Nelson, 81, 801.
801.
Uh, Gray Loeb, 905.
905.
Uh, school board.
Okay.
Um, Skelton, 936.
Okay.
Okay, 936.
Correct.
Bossevich, 883.
Correct.
Hardman, 454.
Correct.
Breakout, 505.
Correct.
And Winiger, 1133.
Correct.
For mayor.
For mayor, gotcha.
Cole, 1,060.
Correct.
Call your wives, 1,035.
Correct.
Okay, alderman. Catherine Price, 187.
Correct.
And Merkwan, 96.
Correct.
For aldermen, church, 98.
Correct.
Helwig, 106.
Correct.
For aldermen, Garrish, 274.
Correct.
Murrah, 288.
Correct.
Okay, and then finally Constitutional Amendment C. Yes, 688.
Correct.
No, 2,265.
Correct.
That it?
I think so. We did get the Republicans commissioner at large.
Mm hmm.
Okay. I hadn't set the shoe aside, so I had to ask. There we go.
Sorry, paperclip for this one.
Give us more paper shuffling than I'm good at.
There are a lot of papers there.
I'll be end up with under voting for, uh, the aldermen.
Um, so under votes would be like people that just didn't vote.
Didn't vote at all.
Yeah.
So we need a motion to approve the canvas.
Okay. Motion to approve. I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second and further discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. We're done there with that? Good? Okay.
Yep.
Uh, Drew, we have the second reading of ordinance 2022 dash 08 and ordinance amending ordinance 2013 dash 04. Updated with amendments through 2017 dash 01, a request to rezone land located at 45369, 302nd Street, Wakanda, South Dakota, from A1 ag district to C1 commercial district for an agribusiness hemp grinder.
I move to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Second reading of ordinance 2022 dash 01 and ordinance amending ordinance 2013 dash 04. Updated with amendments through 2017 dash 01, an amendment to section 3.14 Medical Cannabis Establishments and chapter 2.02 definitions.
Uh, yeah, this is the zoning ordinance, uh, second review. We have a couple little changes. And we just essentially consolidated the zoning districts. And, uh, that's about it.
Yeah.
This one, I brought, put the zoning ordinance on top and license on top.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, what's what's not changed in the copy I got was, um, uh, it still has testing and manufacturing, a conditional use only and in general industrial.
So that's my fault. Um, the copy that I put into your packets was on the updated one. You should have a separate email with the updated one from Drew. I'm sorry, that one is my fault. I missed that updated.
All right, let me see if I can find it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was mine.
All right.
And I think I have the updated one here.
True.
Yeah.
The updated one come from you, correct?
Yes.
It says medical, medical cannabis.
Zoning ordinance or license.
Okay, so we're working on the zoning one now, right?
Yep, yeah. Yeah, on page, top page two is the, uh, where we consolidated C2 and or C1, 92.
And, you know, under B, under section 1B, one, that what we mean there, uh, no medicus, medical cannabis facility shall operate within 1,000 feet of another cannabis manufacturing facility. Really what we mean there under under separate ownership, right? And the second, second sentence kind of clarifies that, but our recolocation of different types of cannabis establishments under common ownership should be allowed on the same location, so. Taken as a whole, I think, I think you're saying what we need.
Sure.
And then it's reiterated down in C3, actually.
Yep.
Same thing. Uh, background checks will not be considered by planning and zoning or reviewing under E3. Last, last sentence of that just means that they're they're not going to bring it up. They're not going to take it up, but we can, is is the governing board.
The intent with that was go in and make sure you can actually start this process before you find out there's something in your background.
Yeah.
For something like John Peterson, his military security clearances and stuff like that.
Yeah.
I'm not worried about that, but if somebody else were to apply, they just check before we start all the headache and process. Just check, make sure you can go through this process. That's all we're asking.
Okay, yeah.
So where is that in all this? I get confused.
That'd be under, uh, section one.
Under, on page three, number three, very top.
But where where is it that we require a background check?
We don't require a background check. The state does. Here, we're not reviewing the the background check, but we're just telling the applicant, hey, make sure before we go through the whole process, you can actually do what we're doing before you end up three quarters of the way and then get rejected.
Don't, don't waste our time.
And or there.
Please, please don't waste our time.
Yeah.
There again, this is where I, with the one, uh, I I yearn for old word perfect because
Yes.
number all, every line is numbered, you know, and in law school, it was word perfect was required, uh, word processing.
Yes, I.
And for good reason.
If we can get a a dog shell to run that, I would happily use that.
Yeah.
You can't email those documents, but.
Yeah.
You know, I.
Yeah, that would make, that would make it so much easier for Phyllis's question. And so yeah, the, and I, and I presume that the building plans and stuff, are those required under the state?
License.
Under the license itself?
Yeah, and then state law will require those too.
Yeah. And it's funny, that wouldn't be under zoning in a way.
Uh, well, we, as far as a building permit, you do, uh, building plan, site plan, rezone. We usually try to get a building plan.
Yeah.
Beforehand, uh, as part of the discussion. Now we know that stuff is going to move around.
Right.
But at least we have some idea what they're going to do.
Well, I guess I'd make a motion to adopt.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Nothing to change, Dick?
Not me. Just questions. I had a few questions. I was going to try to slip them under form and. Form and uh, well, I can remember the full name now, why, the things that you can do without going, going back to straight, uh, stage one.
So hearing no comment, um, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Cannabis license.
So the, you know, I think this is the license that we already have. Well, we already have a license in place. What I'm proposing is a rewrite of it because A was rushed, B we have zoning guidelines in there. I want to get those out of there. And uh, so there are a couple. There were a couple little changes in here. The big one I want to look at, I, it's accidentally uh, blocked out all the way is on page three. Uh, number B. That whole paragraph they got blocked out. That was a mistake. It should have just been on that fourth line. Uh, three words in. Or from transferring such license. So we're not che, people aren't trying to transfer license. We're not chasing them around. Number ten there on page three. Sam had a really good point. If the, at the licensing phase, they're not going to know who their employees are going to be. They might not have everybody hired yet. They'll have to go through the background checks and the state and everything before they work there anyway. So we don't have to get involved in that. Uh, then on page four. B. A to B included the uh. Some language to uh, what more interpretive. You know, some direct examples of what more interpretive, maybe. Then remove six because, or on page five, number six. Top number six, remove that because we're not in that timeframe anymore. Not worried about when the state law comes into effect. And then on page six. Uh. Number, section eight. However, the change in fees will not apply until the following year. So if we do increase the fees, which probably anticipating. And we're not changing them on the applicant without, at least give them some heads up. And then on page eight, there's a typo and we brought, transfer everything over. That number seven should just be removed. Number uh, above number eight there. Then on bottom of page eight. Betty, did you, last meeting, did you say something about that paragraph?
All right, we're on page eight.
Yep, section ten.
Yeah, um, I I was just suggesting that um, uh, you know, we really can't make the finding that's uh, um. That's asserted here because uh, research suggests that it just isn't true. Um, so I I was just suggesting deleting um, the first sentence there. Um, because uh, you know, unless somebody has evidence um, that it's true, uh, I don't, I don't think it's true.
Which one is that?
Yeah.
Um, so section ten on page eight, it's at the very bottom. Um, it says purpose and the first sentence says the county commission finds that medical cannabis establishments can become targets of opportunity for theft and violent crimes. And if somebody has evidence that that's true, I'd be willing to look at it, but I, you know, that the 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 research I've seen suggests that it it's not, not true.
That comparison to bars or. Certain areas.
Yeah, I mean, gas stations are more the target of opportunity than cannabis establishments.
And more security at these.
Yeah.
So I I just suggest taking that out. The second sentence is appropriate, I think. Yes, I think so, Phyllis. Yeah, aims to protect, yep.
And then on page nine, Travis had a comment before. For B and C. That we identify the primary and local fire EMS. So they're not like Pearson, nothing Wakanda, or identifying with the condo, if somebody else is in another spot, then we can uh. Narrow that down. Uh, and then on number twelve, B. Uh, may not advertise and misleading deceptive, false or. A, that's in state law and B, uh, is a county commission. How would we assess that? Think that's all the changes that I, Sam had.
Yeah.
Plus the word, you guys have read it or thought of anything else?
I had one little one. And it just, and I'm not sure in my mind, uh, but the use of prove. When it possibly should be proof.
What page?
Oh, God, it was in a couple of places, but I.
Yes. You know, I'll just search for proven.
Yeah, go through and. And what was the, there was one others, oh. Should we have a definition of certification? That's the, I assume the state certification.
Yeah.
But it's mentioned in a couple of places, but. My question immediately was, okay, what is exactly the certification?
Sure.
That was my only. Nitpickies.
All of.
That refers just to state certification, doesn't it, or? We use the word. Certify anywhere.
That's kind of what I assumed, but I don't like to assume.
I understand.
Let's put a pin in it and I'll uh.
Yeah, we're always, I think ours is only refers to licensing. Doesn't really certify.
Yeah. Let me go through and look at it one more time.
Yeah.
I'll get back to you with that. We'll put it in it.
Yeah, I I found Phyllis's um, uh, section, so it's um, page five. Um, uh, under section five, number six. The renewal application must establish or confirm. It says prove instead of proof. It should read proof.
Yeah, but I'll, I'll look through there again and look at the state certification.
Yeah, it seems to me it was one other place that I didn't mark, so.
Uh, yeah, the, in the number six, I think having a governmental license or certification revoked in any jurisdiction. It be, could be called certif. Holding certificate in some jurisdictions and others, so I think it's. Very appropriate to leave it. In number six, uh, section five, no, number six. Confirmation that none of the principal officers, owners, board members, service, principal officer, board member, medical cannabis establishment that has had governmental license or certification revoked in any jurisdiction. And I would. I would say that would refer to any jurisdiction in the United States.
What page? I'm sorry.
Uh, I don't know what the page is. I'm on.
I'm on here. What section?
It's section five three.
Oh.
Section five, application process.
There we go.
Okay. And then number six.
Yep.
And I think we ought to leave it the way it is, but. Defining what certification is, I don't think we would need to because we. We could be. What we'd want to do is cast a wide net that if somebody's been a bad actor and lost a certification. Anywhere in other jurisdictions in the United States, maybe it's California or Colorado or wherever.
Yeah.
But if they have some parts that are certi- certification, we'd want to look at that.
And maybe. License and then put in print the certification, registration.
Yeah.
Cover and all, etc.
Or, yeah. Nice to be a catchall.
Yep.
Other. Or other like.
Credentials.
Credential or right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that would come, would that come up in the background check?
Well, maybe it wouldn't, maybe wouldn't. Background checks would be mainly uh.
Further, yeah.
For uh, criminal, in the criminal justice system, that wouldn't necessarily come up there.
It might.
Yeah, it may be an administrative, uh, it'd be an, it'd admit, probably possibly an administrative action by some city, county or state. Elsewhere around the country. There ought to be a clearinghouse for this sort of stuff somewhere.
Yeah, it'd be kind of hard to catch them, but.
Oh, yeah, really.
Yeah.
You know, you're trying to go. And the search is going through. I think they have a way to search all the different. Like state cases.
Yeah.
Ended up in in court.
Yeah.
Which I assume it would.
Well, you see, it could end up in uh, in a, before an administrative law judge, which may or may not end up in the, in the court cases, probably wouldn't.
Like uh. Uh, so insurance companies.
Yeah.
They're.
They've got it their own ALJ, yeah.
Yeah, there's no way to search.
No, you could sneak through this pretty easy.
Yeah.
What a credit check.
That won't show up on there.
Show up. No, I don't.
Not, not for that type of thing.
Yeah, not an ALJ decision.
I think we ought to leave it the way it is.
Right.
Uh, but adding that other verbiage, that catchall verbiage, but uh, it's something that uh, we should look into. Maybe, maybe call a couple other jurisdictions and other states to see if there's uh. If, if there's something out there that we don't know yet.
I uh, I've been talking to a couple and uh, yeah, I didn't call, so.
Yeah.
I did have one other question. On section five. Number four. What, what page, Phyllis? Uh, page three. The application process and number four is previous experience operating a legal medical cannabis establishment. Any, is it? Of any value to have some documentation that they've been in any kind of business? To me, it would be. That you have some proven ground of understanding what you're getting into.
To what benefit of ours would that be though, Phyllis? I mean, we've got, we've got plenty of people starting up businesses that don't have any prior experience. I, I, I'm just wondering about getting too far into.
Too picky.
Well, I, I would hate to just deny somebody a permit because we can sit there and go, well, you don't have any experience. I think if they're willing to make that financial commitment, that's, that's up to them and their bank.
And that's why the, if any, the, that tag, tag phrase is important.
Kind of covers that.
We're sort of, we're sort of recognizing that there, it's a new industry in general and, and that we're recognizing that there, there may or may not, a particular person may or may not have. Personal experience, but hopefully they would hire somebody that did.
Yeah.
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 Well, I mean, there's plenty of businessmen out there that have ran plenty of businesses that you wouldn't trust them with your own.
You got a point there.
I mean, there's, there's people who have a lot of experience that I wouldn't.
That's fine. I just, it just crossed my mind in that.
That's all I was wondering. And I guess if it goes south, we've always, it's got the conditional use permit, but. If we deem it to be a nuisance or.
Yep.
There's a lot of problems, then we can pull it.
We have a rather strict renewal process too, so.
Correct.
The other was, do we have anything or any legal on? Then I think it was mentioned on employee training. Either implied or.
Not necess, no, not explicitly. Um, in that section five, number five. Uh, operating procedures and uh, other requirements of this chapter, maybe clean that up, say, chapter in state law.
Enforcement of that would be almost be impossible anyway.
Yeah. And I mean, training, they're not, they're not really operating as materials or some fertilizer. I mean, it's a, it's a greenhouse and a. Yeah. How much training do they, I mean, there's some experts saying, but day to day operations.
Well, it's going to kind of be like a bar. I mean, our, our biggest.
Yeah.
How do I want to say it? Andy's going to be our person. We're going to ask if there's been any problems with it come renewal time, just like we do with the liquor license.
Well, if they don't train their employees, they're probably going to fail.
Yeah, yeah.
Really hard responsibility.
Yeah.
For them to train their employees.
Yeah, they're not checking IDs the right way or they're not.
Right, that's, and that's Randy comes in.
Okay.
When we go to re-adopt this, do we need to go through the whole notice or can we just do this by resolution? When we get to that, and we're getting closer to that point.
Maybe that's a question for Sam.
Okay.
It's just the license, all right, that you're talking about?
Yeah.
Do we need?
Yeah.
All the ordinance for the license.
Yeah.
So, so we got to do the, we got to do the two.
It should go through the hearing process, I think.
Should we do one, repeal the other one and then do it out this one?
Yeah, but this one's got to go through planning and zoning first, right?
No, like, the zoning ordinance is already through. This is just like the liquor license. Do that liquor.
But there's an ordinance for this license, correct?
Yeah, but like when you did the burn band, we didn't go through the planning and zoning for that.
Okay, because that was a resolution.
Yeah. Does, does this have to go through?
This is the first, second reading type thing. I would almost assume it would have to.
I thought it was separate for some reason. We did it different last time.
Yeah, if we're going to repeal an ordinance and substitute a new one, I, I think it's got to go through the, yeah, the two readings, yep.
Because this doesn't go in the planning and zoning.
No, but I, it's, it's an ordinance. I mean, we're creating a licensing law.
Yeah, this wouldn't necessarily go through.
But does it have to be an ordinance?
Right, that's, that's a good question.
Can it just be the license and these are the outline for the license? I mean, then that's a resolution.
I think, I think that this is an ordinance that, that creates essentially county law. Governing the establishment of this whole suite of uh, commerce. And uh. It, I think it should go, that's my personal non-legal opinion, that it should go through the, the ordinance building process. And it might be, it's, it may be cleaner to repeal the old ordinance and replace.
Yeah.
In a separate motion from this, may make that cleaner.
Sure.
So is this license a conditional use permit then?
Yes, I, no, initial use permit is separate and part of, one of the conditions uh, on the conditional use permit will be conditional upon successful license application.
Okay, so should this license be an ordinance?
The licensing. Licensing law should be an ordinance. And that's what we're working on. Licensing itself, yes, is something different, but the licensing like on dark bars, bars are enacted underneath an ordinance like this. Like we're proposing here.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it seems like we're, we're basically creating a regulatory system. And so when we're, when we're actually making decisions from week to week, that's regulatory, but when we create the framework for regulation, I think that would be a law.
Right. Here, you know, this is a legislative action, not an administrative action. Here, you know, this is a legislative action, not an administrative action, so.
Looks like Andy's raising his hand there.
Okay.
Andy?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you there. I just I thought it's on my hand and you're not to the point of actually establishing the form of the. Application for license, are you or are are you there yet?
Theoretically, it's already in place.
Okay, but the reason I ask is I just want to make sure there's some sort of a statement on there, uh you know, I hereby. State on penalty of perjury that the information contained is accurate. Uh we want to make sure that's in there. You had you had discussed a little bit ago, the uh. Prior experience question, I don't really believe like you do that that's a matter of you would approve or deny based on their lack of experience. But it gives you a place to check. Um you would say, you know, if they had done this elsewhere and done it well or done it poorly, we'd want to know that. And you could say, well, I'll just leave it off. If I if they got run out of town. Somewhere else and they came here and they think, well, I'll just leave it off my application, then that would be a basis for denial. If if you found that they were dishonest, you want to make sure you've got language like that in there. And and also maybe a clause that would uh. Uh permit records check to verify the information in the application. So. I haven't seen your application yet, but a few things I wanted to point out before you. Actually adopt an application form for the license.
Do we authorize an application form in here? I think we did.
Yeah. I've already got it started.
Good. That's uh, yeah, I think that's important point, Sandy. Thank you.
And I'll be sending the copy of this to Andy also.
But back to the point on how we should do it, I think this is, you know, really we act in three different ways. It's a. As a. Legislative board, an administrative board and is as an executive board. And uh. So here we're really legislating, in my opinion. And defer to the professor, she's the one that teaches this stuff. I I learned it.
Well, I would think you'd have to handle the same way you have a liquor license.
Yeah.
Or you know, liquor ordinance, so I would think if we did it that way, it's the correct way to do it.
Yeah, we're creating a body of law.
So when they come in for their license. What do they have to do?
So starting fresh. First, go through zoning, rezone industrial or commercial. Then the CUP. Then the county license and then the state license.
So they'll come in, they'll go through the conditional use process.
Yep.
And then the licensing, what what do they have to do? I mean, is there is there public meetings on that? Is there? That's not a separate, that's not another conditional use. The license.
Yeah. Just like a liquor license. I mean, I've never participated in those, but I'm.
And that license would come before us.
I'm good with this draft.
This is gonna involve so much over the years. We're gonna be looking at this again.
Yeah.
And then if recreational passes fall. I'll lose what left that I have in my hair.
But good luck.
That did make the fall, didn't it?
You don't have a lot to go there.
I have one other. On B one.
What page?
Uh page four. I think that's where it was something about. It will be. Yeah, the okay, the county commission will consider completed application. At the next available commission meeting. My thought is within thirty days. The next meeting or some. You know, sometimes things come in and then we only have a day to look at it. And I that made me very uncomfortable. Because we're stating it will be the next meeting and sometimes. That's a little too fast.
Well.
Not hearing you.
I shut off my clock button. Uh it says next available commission meeting and it, you know. That leaves us little discretion because the well, we may. Consider our schedule already full. For the next. Calendar meeting, the next one where we have have time to work on it could be the second one out.
It just seemed like that could be called into question from other sides.
On number three on page four, that you know, next available meeting, but within thirty days.
Yeah.
Right. Comfortable with.
Yeah, I'll.
What number was that?
Number three.
Okay.
That might conflict with something else.
Now that thirty days, is that gonna get us? Cuz in our ordinance, it says sixty-five days on. Applications. Are we gonna be in conflict with that?
No, cuz zone I my understanding is zoning ordinance is separate.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, the the zoning ordinance is no different than. How Kerry runs an electric. And we don't ever worry if there's cross. That's my how I.
I just didn't want the confusion of, no, we've got sixty-five days. No, this is thirty.
For zoning, yeah, sixty-five, but for the license.
Okay. Can we, well, can we change three then? To thirty days after the after a completed application? Cuz somebody could just put an application in front of us and not complete it. Correct?
Yep.
And then the clock starts. I would rather have make sure that it has to be a completed application.
This does say after the applications first present.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Do you have copies of those ordinances for Travis to sign or? Sign a copy and then I'll send off the notice of adoption of papers.
Not hearing you, Kerry.
Oh, sorry, I was telling Drew that um I would have Travis sign. A copy of the ordinances and then I would send the notice of adoption off to the.
Thanks, Drew. Quick vouchers. Everybody get to see those?
I'll move approval.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing unroll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. We'll skip to the courthouse garage discussion, Scott.
Yeah, good morning. I was talking to Travis the other day about uh. What lies in the future, which I understand is kind of in limbo right now until November. Um I was proposing out in that garage to use that uh west fourth as as the shop area. I mean, there's a dividing wall there now is. Kind of roughly a shop. Uh I've been doing a little work out in there to make things a little more convenient in there and I thought, well, you know, we could use that as a shop. Um some other areas we're talking about in here. Uh no, Andy and I talked about maybe using a portion of the garage or whatever PD is, but you know, that's kind of their area. You know, I didn't feel real comfortable about that, but I guess that is an option, but. You know, even with that, it's gonna be required some work down there for lighting and now that's and that sort of thing. Um in the garage and that west quarter of it, I've been, I have installed some extra outlets in there. For convenience, for grinders and what whatever else we might need to maintain mowers and yard equipment and stuff like that. Um so that was kind of my thought. Uh I know that. This room here has been so graciously given to me, so. And the there was talk, well, you know, it's pretty big, you could put a shop down there, but you couldn't grind or drill or anything in this building because. Well, we know what happens then, so. It's it's just a big echo chamber, so I guess that was my proposal, my thought. You know, I was saying. You know, it definitely needs to be painted and it needs some uh. Work done on more joints uh on the building and you know, I was thinking about a small, a small mini split, so there'd be heating in that. Shop and cooling in that shop. Um I don't really have a dollar figure on the painting or repairing or mortar joints, but uh. Sam Johnson did have a small mini split. But he missed order for another job that would fit the bill in there and uh he said he was willing to sell sell that to us at cost, which was fourteen hundred dollars. And approximately another. We figured six to install and that could actually be less than that. So I guess that's kind of what I'm putting out there today. You know, like I said, we don't know what the future holds, but you know, if if things pass in November. That building, you know, three years from now still be there, will still be standing when we say, oh, you know, let's level it, let's. Fence that must make it a yard to put the dumpster in. You know, I just don't know where, of course, obviously, nobody knows where we're going, so. Till that decision is made in November, so. That's kind of what I'm throwing out there. Now somebody has a better idea where I might build locate the shop.
So uh. What is in your budget? I didn't think so, but they what did we have anybody in there that we could? So you're saying about two thousand dollars that you're talking about?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that does, you know, like I said, doesn't include getting it painted and I suppose that's another thousand dollars. But. You know, everything just keeps going up. I used to get a house done for thirteen hundred, but I don't know if that's a doable deal anymore or not. That was back in twenty thirteen, I think so. That's outdated information now. You know, then kind of. Talking a little bit more about this building, you know. A little bit, um I know we have some water intrusion along this wall, especially in this room here. Well, yeah, well. From the outside when it rains, you know, so I have had walk construction, look at that. What it would take, hopefully, to to get that resolved. So. You know, my long term, when I'm vision, when I'm looking at things around here. You know, if we get things shored up outside, so we're not getting water in, that smaller room would probably be a better office fit than this. This could be a storage area. Just a thought and that dirt work out there would be about forty-five hundred bucks, so. I'll throw that little caveat in there too while we're. Talking and thinking here.
Just never quit.
News every time I come in.
Things that needed to be done, though.
Yes.
Yeah.
That I mean, that wall is kind of scary.
What's that?
That was a little bit scary and I, you know, I I mean, having water undermining a building is.
And we have to raise. These retaining walls or window well walls, we're gonna have to raise those. Of course, that means you gotta cut out the rail that's there now, which that's not a bad thing because that rail's not anywhere near ADA compliant. So, you know, we get an ADA compliant rail back in there too. That's all figured into that. Forty-five, I believe it's forty-five hundred dollars was the bid on that, so. That's kind of where we're at with that. I know that's kind of a little off topic, so. That's my proposal for the garage, so that's kind of where I'm thinking about going. Like I said, Russell is yeah. Wants me to research some other ideas, like, you know, research out there. A little bit further too.
I don't think you have much choice. You gotta have a place to work out at the shop. Down here, so I mean, and that's the most logical place it looks to me like.
You'll want a tool, you'll want a bench, workbench of some sort and. Probably what a roll around tool.
Already had one of those.
You got one of those?
Fully mobile.
That's good.
This isn't a big area that he's talking about.
Yeah.
That's pretty small. You know, it's, yeah. Yeah, step outside, change your mind, but. But, yeah, I think it would work, you know, like. That's our dog in three years from now. If this boat goes through, you know, the whole thing is gonna change around here. There's gonna be a lot more space available. It'll be tight, but I think.
But you still might want to use.
You know, if you keep that building, if you keep that building, you know, what well. You just keep more in there.
Well, we'd we'd have more space, so you wouldn't have to go outside to change his mind. Give him a little more space at that point. And you know, and it's important, like getting this landscaping done. You know, that's I think that's something that's should be done pretty early, I I I would think. And uh. Think of a stage two may maybe, you know, I've uh in my work in the engineering lab that uh. That was a good share of our business was those sorts of jobs and uh. I, when I was looking at it, I was thinking, yeah, those those landscaping to make sure that the rain that falls. Uh flows definitely away from the building and it may be that uh. That we may need a perimeter drain too eventually.
Yeah, yeah. We kind of talked about that a little bit. So John will look at it. Uh it was just some grading and we could get things to flow away from the building and.
Yeah.
I know we have some water intrusion over there. On that north wall and the boiler room, that's a whole different. Ball game in there, it says poured concrete and. That's probably gonna take something like you're talking about some kind of catch basin or something or pumping system or something to.
Yeah, so.
To keep, yeah, to keep that dry.
Yeah.
We haven't really researched that one. I was gonna get this one kind of put to bed before. And the whole mechanical upgrade. What's gonna happen in there? What's coming out? What's going in and? So, yeah.
And so we need a motion to give him the money to do it.
I I was gonna ask what what what's 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 the next thing? What what's the next step you need from us?
To say, okay.
He just he needs the approval for the to spend the two thousand dollars.
I just didn't want it. Like I said, I want to be, you know, there's a few things, you know, I gotta get some insulation that's sitting in there. I gotta get some insulation on that block wall in there. Cuz we're just gonna be throwing money out if we don't. So, I mean, there's a few other things I needed. The windows aren't the greatest, but hey, you know, they are what they are. And maybe we.
Did we? Back when we had talked about blown in insulation, did we ever do that?
No.
Yeah, there's no way to blow insulation in there. Everything's just wide open. You know, as far as the wrap, as far as the rafters up above, there's no kind of sheet rock or anything like that in there, so.
I had given some foam foam insulation companies to carry back when.
Yeah, we talked about the spray insulation and I did call those companies and get some quotes and things, but then. When Scott started, he kind of held off on that, um you know, to see originally the plan was to soar the skid steer in there and the doorway wasn't tall enough. And so things kind of changed and evolved.
Okay.
I do have those quotes from those guys. For that spray on stuff, but I think. We can probably just get the sheets of it and some adhesive and stick it up there and. Furt out. Hang up some board for hanging stuff on. Or OBS or whatever they call that chipboard or something up there. To kind of hold the cost down.
So he's asking for two thousand for. Just heating and cooling. just heating and cooling.
Right.
But we better give him something to buy OSB and
Yeah, indeed. That's why.
Insulation. And some big work.
Cooling, you need some insulation.
You think another thousand is going to cover?
Yeah, you know, I was kind of rolling that around ahead last couple of days, you know, if, if we says a thousand dollars to paint it, a thousand dollars to get the inside, I think that'd be more than plenty. Cause I don't see a thousand dollars inside there for some furring strips and some insulation, rolled insulation and
But everything's stupid right now.
Yeah, well, it's true too.
Fortunately, lumber's come down by about fifty percent.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And supply chain issues are
In store?
It's, it's coming, it, it's sliding down into the stores at the re, at the wholesale market. It's, it's dropped a good fifty percent the last three months.
Yeah, air chemicals too are going on. It's, you know, I mean, it's heartening to see like, you know, industrial supply begin to, begin to move again.
Of course, they're coming, all the top water ready, the chemicals. So what's that, Phyllis?
I was going to make a motion that we basically put a budget of five thousand dollars to provide a workspace.
I cannot exceed.
Do not exceed.
I don't, I don't think we're going to get close to that.
No, but I can see, you know, just with, there's two, three, we're already to three, five without the incidentals, et cetera. And so getting to fours pretty easily. Five gives you a little room to move.
Okay.
Have to come back.
So I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Sounds reasonable to me, but yeah, you don't have to spend it all.
No, I won't if I don't. Thanks. You're welcome. Thank you.
So hearing nothing else, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Thanks, Scott. The regional jail resolution. So we just got that this morning and I don't think Andy's seen it yet. Or at least he told me this morning he hadn't seen it yet. So I wonder if we should, can we wait till Tuesday?
Yeah, I, I think that's fine. I, I know that the Regional GL Committee in the legislature is meeting today. You know, I, I, and, and I guess Andy's not there anymore, but it, it would be, it'd be good to communicate with the Chair of Turner County. And, you know, Lincoln County, I know several counties are, have been requested to testify today. I called, you know, Christie at the, the State Association about that. And I said, you know, Clay County has an interest in the outcome here. So you know, please, please keep us apprised and know that as a commission, we, we have a need. We've discussed it. You know, we've got a resolution coming up. So she will, she will keep us apprised of, of what goes on in that committee. And I think what they're doing today is discussing process and scope. And, you know, Art Rush is prepared to talk about Clay County and our needs at that meeting. So I, you know, I, the, the resolution, I, I think if, if we can put it on the agenda for next week, that would, that would be great. I'm, you know, this is the first draft. I'm not a big resolution writer, so I won't be offended if anybody has any suggestions for, for change.
As Sydney sent me. But everything's going on today with it. Said that they started at ten o'clock this morning. And at ten fifteen, Kelly Lasco, Secretary of Department of Corrections is going to talk. And then we've got like Chris Jacobson. And then later on, it's one thirty, Stacy Ackerman, South Dakota Sheriff's Association. Excuse me. Two o'clock, it's Amanda Eskey, National Conference of State Legislators and Crime and Civil Justice Program. Two thirty, it's Lessensive Research Council Staff Presentation. And then it's at two forty-five, it's public testimony. And at three fifteen, it's discussion of future meeting dates, offsite meetings. So that's how the whole thing is going. That she sent.
Yeah. And I think under public testimony, the committee requested three counties to come in and talk about their situation.
That could be, it just doesn't say that.
So what counties are going to talk then?
You know, I remember Cottington. I would have to go back to Christie's email. It probably came to all of us. Let me see. Find it.
She usually sends those out to the auditors to help us forward to the commissioners. And I don't think I saw anything come through, but
Okay, yeah, no, this, this was just to me. And it, you know, she said, thank you for reaching out. We do have information from your sheriff. The first meeting is set with a couple of commissioners that were requested by the committee. And let's see.
Well, I've got here that participating counties are uh, well, no, I guess, nevermind. It's Clay.
Yeah, unfortunately I don't have her initial email on here. The one that I saw that, you know, that there were counties. Yeah, there, you know, I, I had heard that there were several counties testifying. So I was just concerned. I, I didn't want us to be left out. You know, as, as a, as, as a county, so. I've expressed strong interest.
Yeah, the three bills to the legislature last session were, you know, from the three main population centers. Northern Hills, Aberdeen, and Lincoln had, Lincoln County had a proposal in two. And I think it was good that they did that because that prompted this. And I actually had a little concern. There's that study committee on regional jails and correction plans. That's a, the Salazar Committee. There's a second one on Legislative Task Force on incarceration, construction fund, money to build these things. And that's directed by Mike Dedrick and Greg Jameson, who is this co-chair. Kind of want to keep track of that too, to make sure that they're, they're thinking about tens to hundreds of millions of dollars to appropriate rather than, than one to five.
Yeah.
And I don't know when that, they're meeting at all. I think there was, I, I don't know if there's anything scheduled yet. It should be pretty soon.
Well, isn't that the committee that Art sits on?
No.
No, he, he sits on the Regional Jails Committee. So there's two separate committees on construction on, on jails. And one, one of them seems to be targeted. Tell me if I'm right about this, Dick. It seems to be targeted towards state construction of state facilities. But this commission, this committee is targeted toward looking at the existing jail system in the state and thinking about regionalizing for not only our benefit, but also for the benefit of state inmates who would, you know, the state would pay room and board for a period of time so they could return closer to their home communities prior to release, which is how many states do it. I mean, there, there, there is a, a strong linkage between being able to reconnect with family and find a job and, 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 and recidivism. So, you know, people who are closer to home, incarcerated closer to home do better.
I think this is a pretty good start. It's, it's general. You know, what it does is, is that ask them to favorably consider enabling and subsidizing cost of construction of regional jails in the state of South Dakota. It doesn't. It doesn't specifically ask that they consider smaller counties or smaller, smaller proposals like ours. Yeah, but it, it's good in that, that it's pointing out that we support the whole thing. It'd be good if we could figure out a way to say that, hey, hey, us too, we're, don't, don't forget us. Just don't be thinking of those three, three big larger population center projects that you're, you've been talking about.
Yeah, I, I just want to be on the radar.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, this is, this, I, I view this as an attaboy, not necessarily an attaboy, but me too. And how we do that, I, I'm not sure.
Well, this sounds like the first meeting they're having today is more of an organizational meeting.
Yes.
That's, that's what I saw, when I read through it, so. So it'll be interesting to see what they come up with.
Yeah. We're, we're kind of in awkward in-between situation. You know, a lot of the rural counties, uh, mid-state, they, they already, they'll drive their prisoners and they, you know, they've only, they only got three thousand residents in the state. Their percentage wise, you're only going to have to take a trip to Rapid City or, or Martin or Aberdeen or Sioux Falls. You know, once a month or so, but for getting jail services. But we're kind of in that awkward in-between stage where we have some moderate jail populations, but big enough to have our own, but not big enough to really catch notice to at least individually ask for state funding. Is a collective like this, this is good. This gives us a toe in the door.
But the only thing is some of those small places do have the issue. They have the same issues. They had a regional jail, so they didn't have to go so terrible far. Cause I know I, my nephew and his wife live at Falkton.
Yeah.
And she works with, she's PA up there. And, and she told me that that's one of their biggest issues up there. They get a patient in, or they get a inmate in, then they end up have to run that inmate. Well, they don't have any place to have them there. They have to go somewhere with them. They don't have any staff left because they're a small town. So they run the same place. He said that, she said they're, they just need a closer regional jail there.
Yeah.
Instead of having like their Aberdeen.
Yeah, in Falkton, they actually have kind of a choice. They have to go either to Aberdeen or to Watertown.
Yeah.
Which are
Yeah.
Both kind of within range.
Right. But, yeah, but it's still.
Yeah, I know. So
so I guess we're going to have to kind of leave the resolution till the next.
Yeah, Tuesday.
Yes, leave it the way it is. Like I said, I don't, I don't have any obvious improvements that I can think of. Not that I'm necessarily great at that.
The last thing on the agenda is to so we're in that lawsuit that's going to go to the Supreme Court. We need to authorize the deductible of five thousand dollars. Isn't that correct, Carrie? Author, authorized to pay the pool, the county pool, the five thousand dollar deductible? Cause they will, they'll handle it. Their attorneys will handle it for us. It's the cheaper and easier way to go.
Also, so moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. I don't have anything else.
Just a reminder that district meeting is next week.
Oh, what, what date?
The fifteenth.
Fifteen.
In Menno, correct?
Yes.
So only other thing that I have, it's a fair board on the fair. I think the kind, I haven't heard from, Deb Christian worked with me on it. And I haven't heard back from her. She's, I've talked to Missy. But what we came up with was that, and Missy was all right with this, was to, there's five garages out there. I think there's five. Five openings. We're getting, the fair board is going to end up with three of them. And then they're going to keep two of them. We're going, but the, the one thing, the vehicles still going to need yours for two of them. The city will take three.
Okay. Oh, this is on the promoting public transit building.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And the other thing is the city in the future is going to mow on the north side of the building. So the, so the fair board doesn't have to mow it. And what was the last thing? Oh, and that we're going to, we got a group together that we will help set up on Tuesday instead of Monday on, in that building. And we're going to take care of it. See how it goes with you. So and like I said, Deb, Deb hasn't contacted me back that Missy had got bacteria. But I'm sure Missy will be fine. In case she gains some ground. I tried to get the vehicles to, up to the DOT, but that did, did come out. But I did get the vehicles. So.
With long as yours.
That's okay. We can.
As long as you can handle two. Like we're pretty good.
Yeah.
That's all I had.
And the Joint Powers Solid Waste is meeting the sixteenth for their, excuse me, quarterly meeting, major discussion of raising rates.
Move to adjourn.
A motion in a second, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, we're adjourned. Thank you.